All right, any changes to the agenda?
No.
We had a motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
Motion by Raleigh is their second.
Second.
And by Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. We don't have anybody addressing the board, but thank you for being here tonight. Reports, 6.1, Carrie.
I'm Carrie Minador, I teach the day class here. And so Unified FIA is, I have 11th and 12th grade gen ed students, I have eight of them. And they are with the day students that I have. I have a class of day, there's four kids, they're all high school. And so the point of the class is focus on physical and intellectual growth. And my presenter is not here. So I had a write-up that I had sent to Mary Ann a couple of weeks ago, but, so I'm just gonna read it off. First two weeks was an introduction week where students had this got to know each other, become comfortable in the class. I had the gen ed students write a paper on why they took this class and their experience, or their expectations. It would need to see some of them go really in depth with their answers. Fast forward to about two weeks ago, they wrote another paper reflecting on their experiences so far, and it blew me away. Every single one of the students wrote about how they never expected to get someone out of this class, and how their eyes have been open to looking past the differences and seeing who someone is on the inside. Several mentioned how they, how went, excuse me. Several mentioned how now, when they see these students in the classroom, in the hallways, it frightens their day when they stop to talk to them. The growth I've seen in these students has made us experience so much work, so worth it. Even my day students have grown just in these few weeks. They're laughing more, building relationships, and they're really coming out of the show. I have a student who has refused to come to class and participate, and is now taking the role as a class clown. One thing I'm excited for that is coming up is the Special Olympics, and that is Special Olympic bowling. It's in Morehead at the end of November. And in the past, we just had just state students go, usually like five to eight students, and this year we have 10 special ed students going. And then we have other coaches, which are their peers. And actually, this year we have these gen ed students that are in the Unified FIA class, they're coming in and they're going with the kids as unified partners. So normally, the state students participate in bowling, in their case, they're competing individually. And now this year they have a chance to compete individually and with the unified partners. So they're doing like doubles bowling. And so, we're excited about that. I have eight girls, and they're super awesome. I think they didn't really know what to expect coming into this, and I was a little nervous about how it was gonna turn out, but seems to be going really well, and they're excited that they get to come cheer on their friends.
I like it. Sounds wonderful. Thank you. And 6.2.
All right, the activities report. Well, just to start, 7th and 8th grade girls basketball started today. Right now, we're looking at, we're a little bit low on 8th grade girls, but we'll see. We've got enough for two teams, but we could probably need a couple more, so we'll see if that was just a case of the first day. Just checked out dance, talked with Taylor, they're right at 24, which is pretty close to where they normally are. Looking at football, so right now, we currently have all three of our fall sports are still going. Football, got the number three seed, they were 4-4. Not quite the, section is kinda iffy. I think it's up for grabs right now. So we got the three seed, we're gonna host tomorrow at 6:00 against Thief River. If we win, we have a very winnable game at East Grand Forks at 2:00 on Saturday. If we can win that one, then that puts us back in the dorm. Volleyball, 11-16, and we got the three seed. A lot of people wonder, 11-16, how do you get a three seed with that record? But you gotta understand that we play city schools, we play all the big schools, so, and we do quite well. So even a loss to them helps our QRF. So we are gonna host Warroad here Thursday at 7:00, and then if we are able to win that, we will most likely go to Holly on that Friday for another 7:00 game. And then cross country, cross country kinda gets the short end of the stick. They're, in their conference, they've got the 1, 3, and 12th grade teams in state, and then in their section, they've got the top two teams, so Perham and East Grand Forks. The top eight runners will go to state. Right now, we have one runner in that eighth spot, then we've got another runner in that 11th spot. So if they have a good run in vaguely on Friday, we can send a couple, send a couple to state. Other than that, currently working with the high school course offerings, NCAA, once again, we gotta make sure that we're, we got everything kind of aligned with that, and it is an absolute pain, which just a name will get you rejected, so we gotta work with that. And then the last one, completed the MDE report for 17-18. Any guesses on what the most expensive sport per student at DGF was in 17-18? How much money did we spend per kid? What was the highest one? What sport was it in?
I'd say football.
No.
It was...
Golf.
It was, actually, it was softball. Numbers were a little bit down, but with another state trip, it made sense. It was over a grand. Football's right up there, basketball's always right up there, and then volleyball, what their trips to state the last couple of years have been, but yeah, softball took the cake, so. Anything else? I'm kinda sneaking out.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
All right, 6.3, community ed report.
You need to take one of those. We just wanted to recap really where we were for 17-18 on all of our programming. I won't go into as much detail, but last year, we gave you this report to kind of show where we were with each of the programs that we offered. A couple of things I wanted to highlight on the agenda is, the first, on the second page, you're gonna see the top portion is stuff we offer during the school year, and the bottom portion and the backside is our summer rec activities. As you go through and look at those, one by one, when you have time, is a couple of things that we wanted to highlight that are factors that play into the programming and how we set the rates and how the overall income and expenses break out. All of the expenses that we include are all of our supplies that we buy. Those could be products for the classes, it could be, you know, transportation as we go down on the list from when we go to Skyzone, things like that that we have for expenses. Staffing needs, anytime we offer a class, we first try to see if there's anybody within community ed, Nikki or I, that could instruct a class that doesn't cost as much just to keep the costs down. Some of those are non-community ed staffing, it could be coaches outside of our office, it could also be instructors that we hire through 4H, it could be an independent contractor that comes in and teaches a class for us. All of those positions we've included in here, they could be volunteer or paid positions, just so you know that that's included as well. One thing also to take into account when you might, you know, common thing would be to look at, when we get our revenue, how many students does that include? We have to take into account that if we have 100 students, times a dollar, you're gonna get $100, but for us, we might get 89. That might be because we have tuition assistance requests. Those tuition assistance requests come in the form from a parent, a guardian. We will get requests from DGF staff members who will call community ed and say, hey, we would like to enroll this student in our class, do you have it? There isn't financial means to pay, we will add them to the class. All of those requests are confidential. In the school year, last year, we don't break it down. We break it down, but we don't put it on hereby program, is how many tuition assistance, other words, scholarships did we offer? During the school year, in the top portion of that spreadsheet, we offered 138 scholarships during the school year, and we offered 179 during the summer. It doesn't have a dollar amount associated with it, but I just wanted to give you a number. Another thing to mention, as you look down, probably at the bottom of the report that I gave you on the front page, it'll talk about the 3rd and through 8th grade basketball programs that we offer. That is probably one of our biggest programs that we offer. And what I wanted to highlight on that was, one of the program factors in that program, a couple of things that we want to highlight was, in the fees that we have down below for that program, we do have to take into account that, say, the booster club. We pay the booster club, DGF community ed pays the booster club to be in that tournament. So we spend about $2,000 to enter that tournament. We also take into account that the fees are set the way they are, because as a school board, you have not instructed community ed to say, we are going to charge you for facility use. Because when you look at the facility use that we have, it's a lot. You know, right now, with us, this year, starting our basketball program, we're in the gym 48 hours a week. So, you know, some associations that are in this basketball league, their home school will charge, if it's community ed, or Fargo North, or whomever, for facility use. So we don't get charged by the school, so that's a good thing for us anyway. It keeps our costs somewhat down. Custodians, we don't charge, school district does not charge community ed for any custodians to do cleanup. We try to have cleanup after our tournaments or basketball. We try to remind our coaches to go in there and throw your garbage. We don't wanna add any more work to our custodians that we have, than we have to, but overall, it's more use. So they're taking time out of their day to help with our programming. So just, you know, wanna highlight that and say we appreciate it, because it does help us. Sanford, you'll see on that little note that I have there, it says Sanford FMYBL. There's an asterisk next to that, because when you get to the bottom of this report, you're gonna see that we are still waiting on about $1,100 check from Sanford. Sanford partners with the Fargo Morant Youth Basketball League, and anybody that does get a scholarship, tuition assistance from their home school, once in a while Sanford will give back to that home school just to offset the costs. So they're a partner with us in this program. So just wanted to note that when that does come, we will get it to Cindy. Down below on that agenda, I'll just highlight, if you look at the 3rd and 4th through 8th grade basketball, overall, we had last year, and this is last year's report, a season one, season two, this year we have one season. But overall, we wanted to just show you what the rates are for each individual student that participates, if they need a uniform, only need a jersey, only need shorts, or they need the whole thing. Overall, the fee is $95 to $120. Down below that, you'll see some students financially can't afford anything to play. So the fees could, per hour, could be zero. It really doesn't cost them anything to play. Students that are on tuition assistance, it breaks down to anywhere, depending on the grade, you are in the gym, practices and tournaments, anywhere from 44 to 60 hours. So it varies from 93 cents an hour to a dollar eighty-six an hour per kid to play ball. Down below, under expenses for season two, you will just see some of the things that we have to make that program go. And overall, for season one summary, we brought in $18,768, we had expenses of $19,0210. We ended 442, I would say to the minus, so that breaks out to $122 a player. But once we get that money back from FMYBL and Sanford, it'll help offset it. Season one is more of jerseys and all of that, season two is more tournaments. So overall, with season two, each player paid $100. It broke out to a cost, on average, a player $96.19 to play. So we set the rate, it equated to $96.19 for each player. You'll see how much revenue we brought in down below, over all the expenses, and the remaining was 505. When we take season one and season two, there's that little asterisk next to the 6205, we ended right now, for the audit purposes, 6205. That number could sway plus or minus at any year, depending on tuition assistance, costs, fees for uniforms, to whatever. You know, we can always tweak anything in here. Maybe we don't do a pizza party, maybe we don't do coach shirts. We've just done those because other associations have done them, we can choose to do them or not. It's just nice, and I know the coaches have appreciated it, so that was kind of just, I wanted to really recap this so you have the hard copy on that. The page with all the data, go ahead and look through it. If there's a class that you have a question on, by all means, let us know. Art classes, we contract a lot of those out, so you pay $18, you pay the instructor $18, you know? So there isn't a lot of, we're not out there, you know, making money on those. And then you just kinda continue down the list. I won't bore you with going through each one, but some of them, you'll see there's no fee, like snowmobile safety or hunter safety, because the state last year did not let us charge. This year, they would let us charge $5 to help offset the cost for the supplies. And then you'll just kinda continue down. On past summer rec, when you get to the end, just wanted to highlight that you'll see, like, the transportation, that number with a minus just over, overall, says how much was the community ed transportation for the year, and the wages is for our summer rec supervisors there for the two. And overall, that's where we ended. Any questions on any of it? And if you have a question even after this, let me know. We'll offer more data and more information too.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Transportation was a charge backs on all the shuttling and...
Yep, yep.
All the game.
Yeah, so anytime you go, you know, you have a game, you're gonna pay for it. One of the things like, and I think it was babysitting class, I mean, you literally look at some of them and say, we need 20 kids to break even. Well, we had one kid canceled, so we were probably $10 or $20 in the hole, whatever it was. But at the end, one of, a couple of things you'll notice that really help with our transportation is T-ball and coach pitch. In a nutshell, they're parent volunteers, but those help cover some of those costs overall for the summer. Next summer is gonna be, I don't know if the transportation will be a lot more or not, because if Park is tore up, that number, transportation cost number could be higher. We'll be as creative as we can, just to kinda, you know, keep as much as we can in Glendon without affecting safety of kids walking down the main thoroughfare. So there's ideas between now and February, even just thinking of Park, on what we could do, because by February, the brochure is out. So if there's things that, you know, some of you live in Glendon have ideas, let us know, but we'll be, we're brainstorming now on that, on pickups and stuff like that, so...
And unfortunately for, you know, just as a reminder, on the state money for community ed, we're still dealing with 2010 census data. So it isn't until the new census comes out that we actually will see that growth factor in district show up. Because it really is all based on how many people live in the district.
In district, kids, right? Okay.
And I would say too, with us, I mean, I've talked to many other community ed directors, and they say, a lot of community eds should not be in the line. You really, you know, I mean, overall, you're here to provide a service. Well, overall, we don't wanna continue to provide a service for everything and go in the hole on everything. So we try to truly, what's our wages, what's our supplies, and have that spreadsheet before we even offer a program, and try to be as fiscal as we can with it, offer good things.
That's very fiscally responsible for $62.
Yeah, I was dancing when I saw that, but you know, it could change by, and more supplies, your kid always self.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 6.4, board committee reports. We had negotiations.
Negotiations. Yeah. That's about it.
That was...
And that'll be on the agenda.
Yep. Okay. 6.5.
So just a few things, most of our agenda items. I emailed out to you the ACT results, we get that every year. Wayne gets a copy, they send me a copy. The question had come up, somebody had asked, did this include just our juniors? And actually, that number count was all of our kids that tested. So it wasn't just that junior class. Because when you look at the numbers, it was 102, which is more than we would have had. So it was including kids that had retested. You know, the thing that I'm always looking for is on some of those trend data, we know that that was the largest group that had tested at DGF. The larger the group, the lower you're going to go, if it's, in the past years, you know, five years ago, you just had the kids, the students that wanted to test. And then, of course, we changed the system in Minnesota. Minnesota does well every year on the ACTs. Again, finished first in the nation for districts that, for states that have more than 90% of their students test, finish number one in the nation. So, you know, you're always comparing the district against the state that does as well as possible. But there is some trend data that I think, at the very minimum, should be something that some of our departments are gonna wanna take a look at. And when we see some consistency in scores dropping in particular areas, it's worth looking at. And it's also worth looking at if the amount of students that are college-ready, based on the ACT task scores, if that percentage, you know, there hopefully is some correlation based on GPAs, and how many kids are honor students, and then how many kids are college-ready. And if our percentage of students that are increasing on, that are honor students, but are students that are college-ready are decreasing, that's a concern. And that's just something that leadership has to look at. And, you know, it's one of those that hits you right in square in the face when you're looking at that type of data. We've all heard the term grade inflation, and that's something that every high school worries about. So it will, it's data that's worth taking some time and going through. So those results, of course, they were embargoed results. You got them right as soon as we got them, but they've been embargoed, and I think they're now public. So I'm not sure what the plan is at the high school as far as disseminating. The students have all received their results prior to last week. A few other things, some things that are coming up, and just so that if you're checking, I know there were some questions, some people had questions today, when we were talking about the team drives and communication on, and whether things have been brought up on agendas and such. When you go to the team drives, and by Wednesday, by the end of the day, for sure, we'll, some of the drives are set up, but they're set up only for those sites. And I had emailed Wayne and Heidi, and just wanna make sure that the, that we have view access for everybody in the district on those team drives. You know, like, I know Mary Ann already has a special ed team drive set up for all of her personnel, but we wanna make sure that the minutes are available to all personnel, so that when questions come up, whether it be at a site level, or at the birth to 5, the 6 to 12, that when sites are having their meetings, and then if action items are gonna be done to take to the next level, that people can see who is responsible for it, what was the action that came out of it. And so those, I know the elementaries, those are already set up. The Glendon Felton Elementary, the Dilworth Elementary, the birth to 5 folder has all of that. So the meeting from birth to 5, the meetings from Glendon Felton Elementary, from site leadership, Dilworth Elementary, anything that was a topic that was addressed at those meetings is in that agenda. So you can tell exactly what has been brought up at site meetings. It's all there for everybody to view. No innuendos, no this is going on, that's going on, it's in those minutes. Those minutes are on the team drives, okay? Everybody has access to it. Some meetings coming up. Today, I met with 612 leadership. Lot is going on that will definitely be affecting staff, leadership, setting goals. A few meetings coming up. Heidi, Wayne and I, I think we've got, is it Wednesday, Heidi? That we've got that meeting on the United Way grant?
I think Thursday.
Okay, so we've got, we've got the meeting. United Way, we've been contacted by a parent about putting a grant request into United Way. So we're gonna look at that this week. Next week, I have, the admin team has, leadership cabinet has a meeting with GLG, and I, we just got that set up this afternoon with GLG. So that is gonna take place next Tuesday. We couldn't get the Wednesday date, that we, they weren't available. But, so Tuesday, 9:00 to 10:30. GLG, as they said at the task force meeting, was gonna, next step, sit down with the admin cabinet and start trying to fine tune some of these things before we get to that next part of scheduling the public meetings in November. So we have that coming up. We have, I have a meeting November 1st, which is next Thursday, at Lakes Country, and I've mentioned this at the task force meeting, this is becoming a little bit more of a reality as far as investigating the possibility of a career center or a career academy. And so on Thursday, representatives have been invited from DGF, or the admin, the Supes from DGF, Holly, Barnesville, Morehead, M State, Lakes Country, and some representatives to sit at the table and talk about the what ifs on funding, and how we can be, how we can look at efficient methods of delivering career VOTEC programming for our kids. Because it's a lot, we don't have big industries in our school district. You know, we're not Alex, we don't have that. We don't have, you know, the food service, the, what is it, tastefully simple, and some of those things, we don't have it. Perm has some industry, they've got a career component, a career center component in the VOTEC at their new building. But again, it really comes down to, do you have the industries there? So going more countywide, looking at that, the idea that then we can bring the business partnership to the table will be the next step, having meetings with school board reps if it looks like this is something that we really want to pursue. And then it's a matter of going and looking at some career centers. So when I talked to the leadership for 612 today, I mentioned, you know, there's some tours that we may want to go to, that we would send a team, go down to South Dakota, look at a career center down there, and look at some of these different models. Because before we go to the public on a possible referendum bond, we really need to weigh all the options on what else can we do with our facilities, and how much expansion do we need to look at with the facilities? If, what if the VOTEC programs aren't gonna be in the buildings? What if the medical, we can have the medical trades, some of these different, so if kids could come out of high school, already have their CNA, have their LPN, and be working on their RN, but they've already got the first two done, and they're already, they're in high school. So they're getting summer jobs as CNAs and all that, right in high school. So there's some very exciting discussions, I think, that will take place over the next, in the coming months. But that next step is to just find out what are the possible players that may be involved, which school district. which school districts may wanna look at it. Because the, the idea is, if we can put a center together like this, uh, it may be more economically feasible to do that at one spot, uh, so that we don't have school districts competing with each other on trying to find personnel and equipment. So, I, I'm really excited about the possibility of this. Morehead is, is taking a big lead with it also. Uh, they've got some of those same decisions to figure out, are they gonna build a second high school? Are they going to look at remodeling the existing, moving components out? So, you know, I, I, I think there's really good possibilities, and, and when we have the first meeting in November, I'll update the board on what comes out of that meeting, and we'll figure out the next steps. Achievement and Integration is another new program, uh, to DGF. It's a new funding stream. Uh, we qualify for Achievement and Integration because our demographics alone do not qualify us for A&amp;I money. But it's because we are a boundary school district to a school district that does qualify, which is Morehead. And in particular, Morehead qualifies based on its American Indian population. So, the idea behind the Achievement Integration programming is it provides more funding so that, and this is district-wide, this isn't K five, six, it's, it's, it's basically from birth through your services that you provide. It's looking at, uh, not just achievement gaps, but behavioral gaps on discipline. So, for instance, Morehead had been identified on having more suspensions with, uh, with, with some of their minority populations. And so that was identified at the state level, that was in statewide news. Um, so that has to be in the Achievement and Integration plan. Uh, the next step is, we have a meeting that will be scheduled within the next two weeks with, uh, uh, superintendent C-level at Morehead, uh, DGF, we're inviting Barnesville, and Norman County West. Uh, even though Norman County West is going through some of that consolidation, it's Norman County West that also qualifies. So those are the players that potentially could be involved. So we need to find out the interest from each of the school districts. There's set amount of funding based on per pupil unit amounts, and then based on your percentage of population that is targeted for those services. At DGF, annually, right now, uh, and you remember from the levy, we have ninety-seven thousand dollars of new money that'll be coming in. And that's equalized revenue, sixty percent aid and forty percent levy. So ninety-seven thousand dollars in new dollars. Morehead School District has seven hundred and fifty thousand. And what is, what I really, uh, like about it is we can combine our funds for some of the programming. Twenty, up to twenty percent can be used for professional development. And a lot of that is on cultural awareness. So, the idea avid, the whole avid programming fits in beautifully into this. So a lot of the goal planning that's going on Six Twelve, uh, this'll, this'll really fit in well. Uh, as, uh, the elementaries are looking at their targeted services, as they're looking at Rebel Success programming, this may be one of those funding streams to help expand after-school program, programming for those students that may not be able to make it because of transportation. Because this can actually pay for transportation to get the kids home afterwards. So, lots of exciting expansion programming opportunities going on this year. So, it's the perfect time for these leadership teams to really be honing in on what they would like to see for programming. So, today was Six Twelve meeting, and I, I think I took up about close to an hour of their meeting, not two hours, I think. It, it was, it was a lot. We had a lot to go over. We had a lot to go over, including policies. Because those on the policy committee, um, a, as I told the Six Twelve, uh, leadership team, and, and when the Birth-to-Five has their next meeting, we'll talk about the policies also. Uh, the six hundred series is a set of policies that we're either gonna skip, or we're gonna wait until, um, these leadership teams review those policies. Because the six hundreds are all the curriculum pieces. And we definitely need to have all of our professionals looking at those policies to make sure that we have those aligned to our goals. So, that would be the part, I would say, we won't touch the six hundreds until after January. Because a lot of those are brand, there's, there's changes based on the two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen legislative sessions in those policies, so. That's it.
Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, moving on to seven point one, the approval of the October eighth regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to eight point one, under Business, under the Consent Agenda.
Bills for the month, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Thank you, and in your board packet, the Treasurers Report is in there, the Minnesota Liquid Asset Account, Activities Account is in there.
There's a, a thing I wanted Cindy, uh, to chime in on, she brought up a great point as she was looking through some of the numbers, and I think it's, it's good to just bring up for public awareness more than anything.
Which one are you?
And this is about our Minnesota Liquid Asset Funds, so again, just something.
We're looking at this covered in I's, it's been at the end of the month, but we also get, we also just received, we also are ten percent payments from Minnesota. Um, and we, and we also did not have any, um, bills to any of the major, um, I think we dealt with that. Payments to make for all of our, um, payments we have to make all the time, there wasn't any major things of that. So it was kinda nice, I mean, we got a big chunk of money from Minnesota. Because of all, most of the money that we received, we looked at that, it was all, probably the rest was ten percent. So the next chunk was, why is my money not?
So, yeah, when you're seeing that five million, and, and I think it's, just in case you get asked by, by people, they, maybe they go back and they look a, a year ago, or two years ago, and there was three million something, and, and all of a sudden, there's five, and, and you get asked the question, Jesus, have you made two million dollars over the last, why are you raising the taxes? If you made two million dollars. Well, you haven't made two million dollars. You know, you think back a few years ago, it was dropping into the point that sixty-some percent of our money was coming in, in the current year. That was the way that the state balances their budget. You're gonna get your money, but they're gonna delay, they're gonna hold more of it back. So back when it was sixty-some, seventy percent, of course, we had less money in our account. We had more receivables. And remember when the auditors went through that about the receivables? So, it just happens that we're seeing more of it right now in the fund, less is a receivable. So it makes it look on paper that we have more money. It's just that we have less that's receivable. You know from the audit, we did not make two million dollars. We wish. So, that is worth just publicly making sure people know this.
The extracurricular is also in there, donations from the High Hole and Eastview Storage, and Ag County Farm Services, and that's all in the consent agenda. Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any questions? Any no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the nine point one, the audit report that we had received last time. Does anybody have any questions?
I looked through it, but I didn't have any, you know, questions that popped up at all.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the audit as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point two, under Policies, this is the second reading of these policies. Four thirteen harassment, four thirteen harassment and violence, four eighteen drug-free workplace, four nineteen tobacco-free environment, four twenty-one gifts to employees, four twenty-two policies incorporated by reference, four twenty-three employee-student relationships, four twenty-four license status, four twenty-seven workload limits for certain special education teachers. Again, this is the second reading of those policies. Do I have a motion? Is that you, Scott? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, by Amy. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point three, this is the residential property tax abatement. For, looking for a resolution to participate in the tax abatement program for new construction in Dilworth and Glendon, now through December of two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. This is a resolution, so we will need a roll call. Bobby?
Yes.
Scott? Lindsay?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
Yes.
And Raleigh, yes, let the record show six and oh, resolution passes. Moving on to nine point four, this is a contract for Miranda Lockhart, speech-language pathologist, effective today. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Second by Bobby?
Sure.
Oops, sorry. Any questions?
And, just so you know, that will be added into the confidential group, just like the Coda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point five, the snow removal. And we have a...
Recommendation?
Recommendation. And we all received emails.
I have not heard complaints as far as on, on our vendors that we've had.
I haven't.
And I, I've had discussions with James about the idea of keeping it local as much as possible. We've got vendors right in both communities. I have concerns anytime we start having just one vendor, and trying to make sure that they have the equipment to be at both sites. Um, so, recommendation after talking it over Maintenance Department is, let's keep the vendors exactly as we have at the Glendon site and at the Dilworth site.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Who are they again? Got Hoggan?
Hoggan at the Dilworth site, yep. And, you know, when you, it, it's, it's hard with equipment, you're looking at apples to oranges. Sometimes people look at the fourteen-foot blade compared to a front-end loader, and you really have to look at what are the lots, and what type of equipment do you need for the particular lots? And anybody with, you have any background with snow removal, you'll know what I mean by that, so.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point six, this is, this is a program increase, this is for the all-acart position in Dilworth. And again, we'd already received a proposal for, for that.
And it's one of the, it's a part-time thing, just a couple hours a day. We may not find somebody, but if we can, that'd be great. We just do not have personnel, uh, in our paras, uh, with time to be able to do this because of the amount of kids coming through and supervision needs, and we've talked about administratively. Um, so, if we're going to have it, we're gonna need to have a part-time position for it.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point seven, the program increase, this is to approve the Maintenance Department staffing increase as presented. Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point eight, this is the administrative contracts, uh, looking to approve the fiscal year nineteen administrative contracts as presented.
Cindy, can I just ask a question here, as to why these can't, can't be separated, is it all or nothing?
It's up to you as board members. You can go through them one by one, you can do, however, you've got committee recommendations.
Committee recommended to do it.
And, yeah, and I was on that committee, I'm just, um...
We've done it both ways.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just not comfortable with moving forward with one at this time. So, however, however you wanna do it. I mean, if I have to oppose all of them, if it's all or nothing, I guess that's the way it has to be, but...
You can make a motion to do it.
Yeah, you can make a motion to do them individually, or you can do it as, as presented, and then, you know, you can vote against, it's, it's totally up to you how you wanna do it.
Okay, so I can, I'll make a motion to approve them individually, is that the correct wording?
Okay. Okay, so Bobby wants to do them individually, yeah.
So you wanna just do them alphabetically?
Yeah.
Then we got, I'll just give it to you in writing order.
Okay, so Bobby made a motion on that.
And you have a second.
And Scott was a second. Did we have anybody that had any questions on that? Okay, so that's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, so we're gonna do them alphabetically.
Okay. First one is Heidi Critchley.
Okay, motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Next one is Marlo Helio.
Motion?
So moved.
And, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
Next one is Wayne Lepark.
Looking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is Mary Ann Martin.
Mary Ann Martin, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Is that you, Bobby?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is Joe O'Keefe.
Joe O'Keefe, looking for a motion to approve. And there's a motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Am I going too fast?
Nope, you're good. I'm good.
Okay, a second by Raleigh. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
Tracy Telfson.
Tracy Telfson, looking for a motion to approve Tracy Telfson. Motion by Bobby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries.
Next one is Roseanne Allness.
Looking for a motion for Roseanne, Roseanne Allness.
So moved.
Ooh, Lindsay can take it.
Okay, motion by Lindsay, and seconded by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And that was the last one of that one.
Yep.
All right. So we will go on to nine point nine, this is the confidential group contracts.
You wanna do...
Do you wanna do those individually?
One way or...
Be consistent, I think.
Okay.
Want, give me one second here. Oh, I was right the first time, okay. So seventeen, all right.
This, this is a lot, okay?
We're gonna have a lot of them when we do the teachers next year.
Yep.
Hundred and twenty.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve, um, Belka.
So moved.
Motion, and person, motion and second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Uh, Butcher, looking for a motion.
So moved.
By Scott, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, Glassman.
So moved.
And a, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Looking for Henon.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Highness.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Giving Amy just a second before her wrist cramps up here. Motion for Jorgensen.
So moved.
That was Bobby. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Kennedy.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Moving on to Kundi.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Looking for Mickelson.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Go ahead Raleigh, Scott and Raleigh.
Scott and Raleigh.
Got it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
For Amy.
Same sign. Looking for a motion for Munter.
So moved.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
I got it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Looking for a motion for Nettleton.
So moved.
Second.
Amy, you're earning your money today.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion for Newton.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Renner, looking for a motion.
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second. Did somebody hear?
Nope, somebody didn't. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Same sign. Moving on to Zimmerman.
So moved.
Scott, and a second.
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 Bobby first.
You're off.
She beat ya. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, yeah. You all right?
Got it.
Okay, you're good. All right, so we will go on, looking at ten, operations committee is Monday, November 12th at five o'clock in Dilworth, followed by the board, board meeting at six o'clock. We have agreed we're doing bus contracts on this Thursday at five forty-five, should be forty-five minutes to an hour. Don't forget after tonight is the candidate form in the theater, starting at seven.
Correct.
Um, where is bus contracts board meeting?
It's going to be in the high school.
Hello conference room.
Conference room.
High school or middle school?
Where are you at?
Middle school.
Middle school basketball.
Yeah, we have middle school basketball.
Oh, then it will be.
Middle school basketball.
Yeah, it's a, it's in the middle school gym. Can we do it at the boardroom?
Yep, yep.
Then it will be the boardroom.
We'll do it there and then we'll definitely be done by six thirty because then we've got the tournament game over here at seven.
We said five forty-five, right?
Yep. And I'll shoot your meeting invite.
Okay, anything else?
Got contracts for you two. Two copies of each, so we'll do those tonight, then I'll have.
Hey, we need to bring some ice.
Okay. Anything else? Six twenty-four, meeting is adjourned.